Hi, my name is Dwayne Gathers and welcome to another episode of Civitas LA, featuring diverse and emerging leaders who make up this dynamic region and are creating community every day and building a better tomorrow. These bi-weekly conversations really enable us to hear from, learn from, and be inspired by a new generation of civic entrepreneurs who are moving our region forward and hopefully making us a stronger, more resilient, and connected group of citizens. Now more than ever, we aim to elevate civic discourse, foster community connections, and promote civic knowledge and engagement across our region while elevating diverse voices in that conversation. In his fourth and last book before his assassination in 1968, entitled, Where Do We Go From Here? Chaos or Community?, the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. wrote, "First, the line of progress is never straight. For a period, a movement may follow a straight line, and then it encounters obstacles and the path bends. It is like curving around a mountain when you are approaching a city. Often, it feels as though you are moving backward and you lose sight of your goal. But in fact, you are moving ahead, and soon you will see the city again closer by." So as Civitas LA celebrates the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., we are excited to be joined in studio today by Los Angeles City Council member Marquise Harris Dawson, another distinguished alum of Morehouse College in Atlanta, here with us to share perspectives on Dr. King's legacy, his thoughts on where the black community in Los Angeles stands, and how we navigate the challenges and opportunities moving forward. Council member, as we mark Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day here in Los Angeles, welcome back to Civitas LA.
It's very, very good to be here, and we got such a great response on our last visit. We look forward every time we get the opportunity to come in and sit and share with everyone.
Well, we are privileged here at Civitas LA because we can say that you are, in fact, the first previous guest who has returned, so we appreciate that.
Look at there, I'm claiming it. I want a special pen. I'm requesting it.
Well, you know, for those who have not tuned into episode 39, we always want our guests to share a brief personal bio. So share with us an introduction to Marquise Harris Dawson for our audience.
Well, my name is Marquise Harris Dawson. I am the husband of Kerry Harris Dawson. We live in South Los Angeles. My job is a member of the Los Angeles City Council, where I represent District Eight, a community that I've been an activist in all of my adult life and even going back to as a teenager. And our particularities on the city council are really fighting for equity, fighting for humane and effective public safety system in the city of Los Angeles, and really trying to rise the tide of all boats, but especially many of the boats who've been left behind. As this city is one of the most prosperous anywhere in the world, California is one of the most productive and prosperous regions anywhere on the planet Earth, and our expectation is, and what we fight for, is that everybody enjoy the benefits of that prosperity.
Thank you so much for that. So as we celebrate the legacy of Dr. King, you know, we note that he was a proud alum of Morehouse College, as are you, and one thing Morehouse prides itself on is the preparation of young men to change the world through ethical leadership driven by compassion, civility, and integrity, and they've been doing this over 150 years. Share with us your thoughts on the role that Morehouse played in your own formation as a person, as a civic leader.
Morehouse is a very, very special place, as you can imagine. I still, to this day, say, after, geez, it's been probably 35 years since I made the decision to go to Morehouse College. It's one of the best decisions I've made in my life. It absolutely changed the trajectory of my life and how I relate to the world and what I view as my role in it. I can remember one professor, I remember lots of sayings from lots of professors, but I always remember one professor says, "You've got to study and you've got to be well-versed because when it's your turn on the stage of history, the most important thing is that you know your lines."
Okay.
You know how the story is supposed to go, how we want the story to end, and what you have to do when you're on stage in order to move the story in our direction and to move the narrative in our direction. And that really is, you know, what started there at Morehouse, and you see it, you know, come to fruition during, you know, my work as an activist and a member of the city council here in Los Angeles.
No, that's amazing. So I know, and when we do our lightning round, we talk about favorite community events, and you mentioned that the MLK Day Parade was one of your favorite events in the city. And we're certainly saddened that this year that the King Day festivities have been once again sidelined because of COVID. But share with us, in your own view, the importance of Dr. King's legacy, why we celebrate that, and what lessons you take from that, and how that informs your work here in the city council.
Well, you know, Dr. King and the public record he left and his work is really, for us, the best of what it means to be both American and the best of what it means to be black and to grow out of the black tradition, particularly the black church tradition. And so that's why I think Dr. King is special, even though he didn't spend a tremendous amount of time in Los Angeles. When you talk to folks who were around at the time of Dr. King, they'd say he'd come to town, he'd drop into a church in South LA, and he'd spend the rest of his time on the West Side, you know, raising money for SCLC, which I can certainly imagine him doing. But he still, you know, has a very, very big impact because his work in the civil rights movement really laid the basis for the creation of what we now know and refer to as Black Los Angeles, and also Los Angeles's preeminence as what some would call a Latino city. We are, you know, one of the major Latino cities anywhere in the world, certainly here in the United States. And so the bases for that are out of the Voting Rights Act and the Fair Housing Act and all of the California Civil Rights Act and the Civil Rights Act of 1964. All of those things grow out of those movements and that legislation. And so I think that's why Dr. King is particularly special here in Los Angeles, not just in the African-American community, but around the city.
So we reference his last book, Where Do We Go From Here? Chaos or Community? And in the first chapter, Dr. King tries to answer the first basic question, which is, where are we? So as this episode talks about where is Black Los Angeles, give us your sense of where we are as a community at this time in history.
Well, you know, Los Angeles, I think, is in a tough time. Los Angeles is facing one of the biggest contradictions of its history. That is, we are more prosperous than we've ever been, and at the same time, poverty is worse than it's ever been. And by that, I don't mean that there are more poor people than there have ever been. I mean, the conditions that poor people live in now are worse than any conditions we've seen historically. So it seems as if if everything's gotten better, it ought to get better for everybody, and that's just not the case. In fact, we have people who work full-time jobs who are residents of shelters, homeless shelters in our community, and I think that's absolutely unconscionable. I think Dr. King and every other freedom-loving and justice-loving person would be appalled and turn over in their graves if they knew our situation. And so I think there's nothing we can do or talk about in Los Angeles with all the great work that's being done around, you know, police reform and all the great work that's being done around funding equity and all the great work that's being done around transportation. None of that matters if we can't figure out a way to meet the basic needs of our neighbors and make sure that everybody who lives here lives indoors because we are, in fact, a civilized city.
Well, I know you had a conversation recently with Professor Emmanuel Pastore at USC, and you talked about the history of South Los Angeles and this relationship that you just touched on between the Latino community and the black community in South Los Angeles, and the commonalities between these groups, and how there's a need to work more closely together to meet shared goals. Can you expand on those thoughts?
Well, you know, I think Dr. Pastore is a good example of how what the United States really does, and certainly the part of the United States that has in its DNA white supremacy, says to people of color and different ethnic groups, "You ought to be divided. You ought to look out for yourself and let them look out for theirselves, and you should compete with each other." And that competition almost necessarily leads to a race to the bottom. And so, you know, what's been done in Los Angeles, and I think, you know, this is really the example and the legacy of Dr. King and a lot of his adherents, is we look for places where we can struggle together, where we can engage in struggles that make life better for all of us. So if there's a pothole, you know, on Avalon, black people live on Avalon and Latinos live on Avalon. When a Latino car rolls over the pothole, their car gets messed up, and when a black person rolls over the pothole, their car gets messed up. So we say, "Let's work together to make sure we don't have potholes on Avalon," or any other street for that matter. And that really has been the character of the relationship between African-Americans and Latinos in Los Angeles, particularly in South LA and the central part of the city.
Well, certainly, you know, we all went through this process called redistricting last year, and I think you were heavily involved in that. And it seemed to me, you know, at least the sessions that I attended on Zoom, that there was this attempt maybe to pit, you know, black community versus Latino community, and we're looking at Council Districts Eight, which has the largest citizen voting age population, which is African-American, CD Nine next door, Latino. You know, tell us about your thoughts on that process and how did Black Los Angeles fare in that process? I saw a great article in the Sentinel, LA Sentinel newspaper, entitled, "Black Lines Matter."
Yeah.
Share with me your thoughts on that process.
Well, I think black lives and lives do matter. I think that, you know, frankly, since I've been on the council six years, this redistricting maps are one of our poorest work products, frankly. I think it's a poor reflection of both the will of the people and frankly, even the will of the council. Redistricting is a necessarily tough issue because there can only be one line. You can't have two separate lines, and you can't have a compromise line. The line is the line. I thought scant consideration was given to black voters in this time. CD Eight is one of the only voting districts anywhere in Southern California, frankly, anywhere in the state, that has a majority of black voters, where the voting age population is majority black. And there was not special attention given to that fact, and it was as if treat those people just like you treat anybody else. And the thing about the black experience that I think is particular, that any rational person knows, is sometimes you have to look at African-Americans, or women, or other oppressed groups and says, "You know what? We're going to single them out for special positive treatment because in the history, they've gotten singled out for special negative treatment." And that was really my ask of the council, and I was not able to get a majority of the council on that. And so we'll continue to struggle over it. You know, I believe the fight's never over. You know, like you quoted from Community or Chaos, "The line's not straight," and so, you know, we're taking a couple steps back, but I still know where the lines for justice are, and we'll continue to pursue them.
And how will this inform your work going forward this year? I think you're one of the council members not up for any reelection this year.
Yes. You know, I'm one of only two members of the council that isn't running for reelection or higher office, so it's an interesting place to be in. I think that frankly worked against me in the redistricting struggle. But it was a, that experience was really eye-opening for me, and it, you know, definitely showed me the ugly side of politics, you know, where people will look you in the eye and say, "You're right, but I'm not going to vote with you because there's another thing that I got to consider or thing that I got to take into account." And so that maturing process, I think, in the long term, will work to the benefit of my constituents and to the larger black community in Los Angeles. Time will tell, but we're still at it. We're more serious and more burnished than I was a year ago this time.
Right. Well, you know, thinking about challenges, I know in that conversation with Dr. Pastore, you also talked about the whole notion of displacement, and that's been a conversation that we've had on several of our podcasts and various other communities as well, you know, as the nature of the region changes, the demographics change. But one aspect of this displacement is the impact of metro. And of course, you know, you're in the heart of this metro expansion called the Crenshaw Line, but I think you choose to look at this as an opportunity for placekeeping. So share with us your thinking around the impact of metro, when is it going to open, and how are you, and how are you working, your team working, to mitigate any negative impacts of gentrification?
Well, look, we think the metro line will work in the next 18 months to 24 months. We think that train will be running. Fortunately, the community's had a long time to prepare for it, a long time to try to mitigate the impacts of it, and a lot of times to educate each other. I mean, one of the things about gentrification that we don't, as a community, like to deal with a lot, is probably what gentrification isn't the buyers, it's the sellers. That's the trick.
All I can say is hallelujah to that because I was approached by someone years ago in a previous, in a previous role, and I was asked to offer my thoughts to a young woman who, you know, her family was taking ill, and she had this wonderful property in Baldwin Hills. The first thing I said to her, "Do not sell."
That's right.
"Do not sell."
Do not sell.
So please.
And figure out how to benefit from the value, the equity that you've grown. Figure out how to perform the value capture without giving up the property. That really is what our community is, has to focus on, and I think this train has really spurred us to focus on it, particularly in the Crenshaw District, but throughout South Los Angeles. We're very excited about Destination Crenshaw. What the community said is, "Let's mark the territory. Let's put our art, let's put our culture out on the street." So when you, when you pass through that community in that train, or you get off that train, you know where you are, in the way that when you get off at 125th Street in Harlem, you know you're in Harlem. That's what we intend to do in the Crenshaw District, and so we're very excited about the Destination Crenshaw Project.
Except having grown up on 124th Street, when you get out of the station at 125th and there's a Starbucks there, you say, "Oh, hell no." You know, not Starbucks here, not here as well.
Yeah, right, right, right. Starbucks, unfortunately, on the horizon, you see the Apollo Theater, so you're like, "Okay."
Yeah, exactly. But so let's talk about Destination Crenshaw, because I know you touched on it in the last episode, and it's viewed as a permanent place of expression for Black Los Angeles. So share with our audience who may not know as much about it, tell us about the initiative and where it stands currently.
Well, Destination Crenshaw is an open-air people's museum dedicated to the history of black folks in Los Angeles and in the West Coast. It really tries to capitalize on the fact that black art in the United States is in a renaissance, and Los Angeles is the capital of that renaissance. And so whether it's television or movies, you know, we have two, three black women, Shonda Rhimes, Issa Rae, Ava DuVernay, others that I'm not naming, who have content, not just content in the mainstream, it is some of the most popular content in the mainstream. If you want to talk about music, which we've always excelled at, but we're excelling in different ways. Kendrick Lamar won a Pulitzer Prize for a rap album about this community, and it goes on and on. Kerry James Marshall and Kehinde Wiley, who just did the Obama Portrait, we've commissioned him to do a large monument in San Kofa Park. We're very excited. Perkins &amp; Will, the architecture firm that did the African-American museum in Washington, DC, is the architect of record for the Destination Crenshaw Project. So we'll spend about $120 million along the Crenshaw Corridor with art installations, activations, pocket parks, landscaping, landscaping that traces our history from Los Angeles to the American deep south, to the west coast of Africa.
Oh, wow.
We're going to have plants from all those places, and again, landscaping and horticulture that spans our history.
Excellent.
And so telling the story is important, not just for our folks and the young people that come behind us, but it's also to people that come from the outside. So, you know, they won't think of us, you know, as the people that they saw in the latest Drake video or on a sitcom, that they really understand the deep and textured contribution that black folks have made to Los Angeles.
And where does the project stand now, and how do folks get involved and support this?
We are in construction right now. We have a 70% local hire, so it's one of the biggest construction projects in LA County where a majority of the workers are African-American. I'm very proud, and we're going to, that's going to be the case through the completion. You can go to destinationcrenshaw.la and get involved there. There are a number of things that we have been doing and that we will continue to do. Of course, a lot of our public activity is curtailed because of, you know, the quarantine that the country and the world has been under, but there are many, many ways to get involved. One of the biggest things that we need that I think your listeners would be especially adept at is we have a portal on the website where we ask people to tell their stories or make comments about how they remember Crenshaw. What were there, you know, some of their fun memories around Crenshaw? Like, you know, one of my first memories of Crenshaw is piling in a car with my cousins to go down to the Fat Burger near Vernon because, you know, Michael Jackson, the person who had the Off the Wall album at the time, was showing up to get burgers, and we knew what time he was going to be there, and you could get a glimpse of him. And so there are all sorts of histories like that. We talked to people who talked about when the television show Soul Train first came out. They would, the producer would drive a van up and down Crenshaw and look for kids dancing on the corner.
Oh, wow.
And he would pick them up, take them to their house, ask their parents for permission if they could go on the show, and that in exchange for being on the show, they would buy them an outfit. And, you know, they were like, "Great." And that's how you get Soul Train, one of the longest-running shows in the history of television.
Saturday mornings.
Yes, that's right. So we're trying to piece together that history because a lot of that stuff isn't written down anywhere.
Who's curating all this for?
Well, so Destination Crenshaw has a historian on staff that's, again, calling the stories, trying to attach them to dates and times and documents, and pulling together all the various times the Crenshaw District is mentioned or is on television. I mean, we're fortunate, unlike a lot of cities, you know, a lot of other cities with large black communities have historically black colleges or universities that do a lot of this work and have been doing it. We don't have that in LA. But we do have is movies and television.
Right.
So, you know, you can, a historian can go back and look and say, "Oh, that's a picture of Crenshaw at this time, or this is a picture of Vernon or Slosson at this time in history." So all that's being done, and so one of the things we expect is not only will we have, you know, dozens of monuments and acres of landscaping and murals and guide paths and all the rest, we will also have documentation that you'll be able to access of our history around Crenshaw. But as you know, our history in this city has moved as oppression has moved.
Right, right. Well, you know, talking about Destination Crenshaw and this example of black participation in the culture, and I really am reminded by something you said at our last episode, and you talked about Hollywood being the entertainment capital of the world, and Hollywood would not be Hollywood were not for the black participation in Hollywood. And, you know, we posted that comment. It was just, it was a great comment. So thinking about black contribution to the culture and a couple of, you know, amazing women that you just mentioned, I can't help but think of the impact currently and future that this HBO show that just concluded will have on the culture. So I don't know if you followed Insecure.
Of course.
Issa Rae, you know, a great celebration of South Los Angeles. Were you a viewer? And give me your thoughts on the show and its impact on the culture.
Well, you know, the show, the impact of the culture on the, the impact of the show on the culture is, remains to be seen. It is an incredible document. It is one of the most beautiful love letters to my community that I've ever witnessed in the time Issa Rae has become a friend and big supporter of Destination Crenshaw during the time of the show. I'm there every week, you know, eyes peeled to see the show. And so we'll see. I think what it's done is it's given black folks all over the world permission to make different types of content.
Absolutely.
That says, you know, "I'm going to make the content about my everyday life, and nobody's going to get shot, nobody's going to lose their house, you know, nobody, you know, there's not going to be, you know, any traumatic events. It's going to be organized around my everyday life, trying to figure out the basic questions." Content that, by the way, white people have all the time. I mean, there's, you know, Julia Roberts probably has a dozen movies that are the same topic as Insecure, but Insecure has done our way with our flavor, and obviously, like with everything, we bring something to it that other folks just don't bring. And so it looks, feels, and is experienced in a special way. You know, my favorite character, I have a lot of favorite characters in the show. My favorite character is probably Thug Yoda.
Oh, okay. I was going to ask you that, and I was going to, I was going to try to guess who it would be, and I thought he might say that. I'm a big Kelly fan myself.
Okay, Kelly's hilarious.
I think Kelly is hilarious.
Kelly's hilarious, but it took me a while to warm up to Kelly, but by the final season, I was really into her. But I really like Thug Yoda because, you know, he just reminds me of so many people who, you know, we, you don't quite call them wannabe thugs, but, you know, they're kind of, they wear the clothes and they have the language, but, you know, they work at UPS, really.
Yeah, exactly.
And they take their daughter to school every day, and they, you know, they do all the regular things that regular people do. They just kind of have this presentation that doesn't get represented often in movies. And obviously Tristan is a really great actor.
I thought the show was just simply absolutely brilliant, and I just loved the music from it. And I, you know, I felt myself shazamming all the time, just like getting new music. And I found a group actually from that that's actually going to be in LA on May 11th at the Fonda because of that show.
Oh, wow, very nice, very nice.
I loved it. So given that what we've discussed today, you know, how do you view the state of Black Los Angeles and black leadership in particular? And I think, you know, as we unveil this year of Civitas LA, you know, we note that it is a municipal election year, and we've got a lot on the line for Los Angeles. We elect a new mayor, you know, new city council members, et cetera. So, you know, what is your view on the road ahead for Black Los Angeles? And what is your call to, what is your call to action for Black Angelinos as this year unfolds? And we think about the leadership of our city.
Well, you know, the call to Los Angeles, to Black Los Angeles is very simple. Don't wait. Step up, show up and show out. Don't wait for the leaders to tell you what to do. Don't wait for organizations to tell you what to do. You know, grab your, grab a hold of it and vote. Before you know it, end of April, beginning of May, the ballots will be out for the primary for the new mayor. We have Karen Bass on the ballot from my part of town. There are lots of likable people running. None of them hold a candle to Karen Bass with regard to experience, perspective, and capacity. And that's just, I say that without fear of contradiction. I sit next to one of them in city council every day, and I tell him that and have told him that. I think we are very lucky to have a candidate like her. So that, I think, is our first order of business, is making sure we take care of business there. But then I think it's very important, city council elections will happen in all the odd-numbered districts this year, and all of the districts in LA have an undercount of black voters. That is, there are more black voters there than anybody realizes. And so I think you've got to step up and weigh in on these elections. Our city council electorates are new this time, so this is the first time, well, this is the second time, our city council elections are in the even year with the governor and the president and the legislatures in the state and, so a lot more people vote for city council than before. And so I think it's an opportunity. These seats have never seen an election on this calendar, these odd-numbered seats. I went through that in 2020, where the number of folks that voted in my district for the city council has increased by a factor of four. So I think there's tremendous opportunity. The city is calling for change. I think people are fed up with our inability to house our neighbors and fed up with the idea that we've raised our taxes, we've passed new rules, and homelessness just seems to get worse. And the loudest people just want to punish people for being poor, which everybody knows is not a solution. It, you know, it's like taking a shot of tequila instead of dealing with your problems. And so that's really where I think we are. Homelessness is the number one issue. We got to put the people in place to do it. Karen Bass is at the top of the ticket. I think she matters the most, and I think everybody ought to take a hard look at every other seat.
Well, you know, not to ask for any favors of the council member while he's here with us in studio, but we have offered Ms. Bass a place at the table here on Civitas LA. So if you see her, let her know that she's got, she's got several invitations to come onto Civitas LA.
I will tell her, I will encourage her to make it happen.
Okay, we appreciate that. So, you know, as we wind down, we always appreciate the lightning rounds. We found that over the last year and a half, you know, people sort of enjoy getting a sense of your Los Angeles, or in this case, could be your Black Los Angeles. So share with us, in our lightning round, a favorite restaurant or two by the Dawson, Harris Dawson family.
Well, we're really feeling Alta these days. Alta Adams, I think, is a favorite of everybody. And I'm going to say John and Vinnie's just because they opened up on Slosson and Buckler in my district, and they have an excellent arugula salad. It is to die for.
Okay. Well, I'm going to go with Alta Adams because I love the deviled eggs there.
Yeah.
You know, give us a favorite place to take a sip. So this is, you know, either a watering hole for a cocktail or coffee shop, since we had our friends from Sippin' Sondra on some time ago.
Well, I love Hilltop. Both Inglewood and Slosson locations are a great place to vibe. Also, not in my district, but in Inglewood, Mingles Tea. Mingles is very chill because it's never crowded, parking's always easy, the tea is, you know, really, really top-notch, and it's right there on Crenshaw, just north of Manchester.
Favorite place to take a visitor?
Favorite place to take a visitor in the city of Los Angeles? Of course, it depends on the visitor, but I really appreciate the Friendship Bell in San Pedro. One, you get to see the port. The port is one of the few places in Los Angeles where you get to understand the size and scope of LA, second-largest port in the world, and you get to go, whoa. And then the Friendship Bell is there, and it's such a great symbol, a gift from South Korea to the people of Los Angeles, and sits there on the coast of overlooking the Pacific Ocean.
Favorite park or hike?
I am not a hiker, so my favorite, my favorite walk is always the, you know, the Pacific Ocean, our famous beach walk.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Obviously, you know, Runyon Canyon and all the famous ones, you do, but I, there's nothing like, there's nothing like walking next to that ocean.
Gotcha.
There's just nothing like it in the world.
Favorite community activity or event?
Favorite community activity or event remains the Martin Luther King Parade. I, I'm really sad we're not having it this year. I can't wait. We're going to blow the doors off in 2023, uh, because we got to make up for two years lost.
Absolutely. Well, council member, this has been a great conversation and normally we would say the guest gets the final word. But since we last saw you, we now welcome you into the land of podcasters. So we know that you have a podcast yourself called MHD Off the Record.
That's right.
So share with us, tell us about MHD Off the Record. Give us a, give, give us a plug.
MHD Off the Record grew out really of a response from a lot of residents and, and voters who are like, well, we don't really know you or really, we don't really know what you think. Or when we hear you talk, it's only about, you know, whatever's in front of the city council or whatever the city issue is. And so the podcast gives us an inch, an opportunity to go in depth in issues, uh, to talk about history, to talk about perspective, but also to talk about things that the city council would never cover, like culture, like the things we've talked about today, like, you know, Insecure. And, uh, to talk to, uh, folks trying to break into television or to talk to, uh, some of the, the most significant thinkers of our time, like Dr. Pasteur. And so, you know, we're, we're growing, we're inspired by Civitas. And so, uh, we're trying to build a, build a catalog. And hopefully, uh, after a few years, uh, we will have a document that really, um, heralds what's happening during this time. And the perspective of some of the folks shaping and influencing, uh, politics, culture and civic life.
Well, I really enjoyed the, the gentleman you had on when you talked about, you know, the question around, um, justice versus policing. And it's a false choice. That was a great, great, great conversation.
Yeah. It's Akilah Sherrells, who really is, uh, one of the pioneers of the gang intervention movement, which is now used around the world, not just in the US. But certainly Los Angeles is the birth, uh, place of it. But, but that's an example. So when I go to council, I get to vote, you know, do I want this police budget or I do, I want that police budget? And there isn't the opportunity to say, hey, wait a minute, why are, why is my community being asked constantly to choose between safety and justice? Like, it's almost like they're saying, well, you have to put up with this amount of, of police violence and undeserved violence in order to be safe. And the fact is, there are lots of communities that are both safe and don't have to put up with that nonsense. And so that's who we want to be and that's what we're going to demand.
Well, that was a great conversation. Well, this has been a great dialogue and we appreciate your service to community. So as we say on Civitas LA, the guest does get the final word. So do you have any concluding thoughts for our audience today?
Well, you know, I thank you, uh, for having us back and, and elevating, uh, the voices of folks like me and others, uh, in our community. I think it's very, very important and, and you take a, a extremely thoughtful approach. And, uh, we appreciate, uh, folks that listen. I would tell you, um, because I do this to, a lot of media outlets I go on and I never hear another word about it. Uh, I've actually talked to people who listen to this podcast. So, you know, I've run into them at, at various places in the public. And so, uh, that, uh, causes me to give mad props to, to Civitas and its hosts and engineers.
Well, we appreciate you, we appreciate your team. Thank you, Rhonda, Communication Deputy, for joining us again today. Thank you for your introduction to David Leach, who's now the intro of our music. So we appreciate those connections to South Los Angeles. To our audience, thank you for tuning in. We hope you enjoyed this program. And this really represents a, a great segue as we launch our Black History Month series in two weeks. So join us in two weeks. Until we meet again, stay strong and get involved. To learn more about Civitas LA and to share feedback on this program or recommend a future program, please visit us at www.civitasla.com. And don't forget to connect with us on Facebook at Civitas LA, on Instagram at Civitas underscore LA, and on Twitter at Civitas underscore LA.